Call this meeting to order. The Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, September the 6th, 2017. And it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Yeah.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Manick Lear.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilman Ferguson has a special guest tonight. He wants to introduce.
I'm excited to be able to introduce to our community Pastor Rob Duffy. He and his wife Angie, they are now past to the Living Water Church that will be launched for their first service September 17th at the Knights of Columbus. Welcome.
Father, we come to you tonight in the name of Jesus, asking you for your blessing upon this council meeting. Lord, we pray that you lead and guide each of our leaders as they do business for our great city tonight. We lift up our community and surrounding area as well, too. And we pray for your protection and safety over each person in light of the hurricane that's coming our way. We just ask you to have your way in our lives in Jesus' name. Amen.
Flute to flank. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you. Thank you very much, Pastor. Okay, the council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting, August 16th, 2017. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes of the August 16th meeting.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations. Our first presentation is our third quarter awards to employees of the quarter. We have co-recipient this time. We have done this before, but it's not very often this happens. So I'd like to call Joanne Conway up. Justin Kitchen. Certificate of commendation presented to Justin Kitchen. On behalf of myself as mayor and the Rockledge City Council, the citizens of Rockledge, and your fellow employees, please accept my congratulations on being selected as City Employee of the Quarter, 2017. Your recent efforts to become certified as a state-certified pump operator, Fire Officer One, and paramedic reflect a significant commitment to your department and, most importantly, to your community. Working to improve yourself with these courses, along with your positive attitude, are a reflective of what quality public service is meant to represent. Congratulations. And here's your certificate. And... Don't probably forget your wife. Now, Joanne, Finance Assistant, Finance Division. On behalf of myself as mayor, and the City Council, and the citizens of Rockledge, and your fellow employees, please accept my congratulations on being selected as City Employee of the Quarter, 2017. The demand on your work time and efficiency in which your process and track over 300 invoice payments every month does not go unnoticed. Your willingness to assist in all projects such as vehicular assets benefits all departments citywide. As an ongoing effort, your work with the City Clerk, Public Works, and each other department to maintain an accurate list of vehicles purchased, disposed, and transferred in order to help control risk and reduce insurance costs. Thank you for your dedication and hard work.
I've been at this so long, if he's getting that same look, that same smile Larry Schultz had.
Donnie and Nadia Danielson, are they here? Come on up. This is Pam with our tree board. And that's the house right there, folks, if everybody wants to see it.
That's not your house.
That's not your house? Dee, what's going on here?
Uh-oh.
It happened. We show it at the next meeting. How about that?
That's never happened.
Okay, Donnie and Nadia, right? Nadia?
Nida.
Nida? Nida, I'm sorry.
That's actually...
This is you. You want to read it?
Is that me?
Yes, you guys turn it up.
We're after good starter tonight.
As Chairman of the Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Board, it is with great pleasure that I inform you that you have been chosen to receive the Board's Excellence in Beautification Award for the third quarter of 2017 in the residential category. The Board wishes to express its appreciation to you for the time and resources spent in perpetual maintenance of your residence in such a manner that it is indeed an asset to our community.
There's your certificate.
Thank you so much.
And there's your special pin. Now, this is like jewelry. Let's go out and have a picture. And this will be on the front page of Florida Today Month.
Caption will probably have him employee of the month.
I don't know, but that's what was on that. 29, okay, yeah.
Ten just had a picture of him.
Okay, so it's hit, they said it's his neck.
One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Edit.
This council needs leather teeth.
We've got one more, stay up here.
Oh, I forgot the other.
Okay, our commercial beautification award. Mr. Robert Chaffeo, Fisk Professional Building. And I'm sure Paul, you're here for that. Come on up, Paul.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Beautiful building, thank you.
As Chairman of the Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Board, as we're also known as the Tree Board, it is with great pleasure that we inform you that your business, Fisk Professional Building, at 1802 South Fisk Boulevard, has been chosen to receive the Board's Excellence in Beautification Award for the third quarter of 2017 in the commercial category. The Board wishes to express its appreciation to you for the time and resources spent in maintenance of your facility in such a manner that it is indeed an asset to our community. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I was gonna say, that's not our building, but I...
We know better.
Our next recognition is a special recognition, Sandra Basenger. Come on up. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sandra Basenger is the principal of St. Mary's School. She was selected over Catholic school administrators throughout the entire diocese as the recipient of the Jennifer Henigan Catholic School Leadership Award. This award is named in honor of the late Jennifer Henigan, who was very much involved in her church, Catholic schools, and Catholic youth sports. The award is presented to an outstanding educator who amplifies the spirit, faith, and professionalism of the award's namesake, Mrs. Heniger. Congratulations, Sandy, and keep up the great work, and we appreciate what you do for our community.
Thank you.
We're losing half our audience. Budget, finance, budget report, none. Public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. Okay, this is gonna be busy tonight, guys, but we're gonna get through this real quick, okay? If everybody bears with me. Okay, first thing we're gonna do, we're gonna open the floor for a public hearing for the fiscal year 2018 general administrative budget and millage rate. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on the 2018 general administrative budget and millage rate? Is there anybody in the audience? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Our next is public hearing, resolution establishing recomputed proposed millage rate. Do I have a motion from the floor?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daskey.
Offer a resolution establishing the recomputed proposed millage rate for 2017. And to read the... I'm sorry. And to read the resolution in its entirety to open the matter for public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Resolution establishing recomputed proposed millage rate for 2017, ad valorem taxes in the city of Rockledge, and publicly announcing the percentage increase in the property taxes tentatively adopted by the Rockledge City Council, whereas the Rockledge City Council here and advises the Brevard County Property Appraiser that the rollback millage rate for the city of Rockledge for the year 2017 would be $5.9729 per $1,000 of assessed valuation, and that the proposed millage rate for 2017, ad valorem taxes, in the city of Rockledge was $6.20 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. And further revise said property appraiser of the date, time, and place at which a public hearing would be held to consider the proposed millage rate and tentative budget. And, whereas pursuant to Section 200.065-2C Florida statutes, the Rockledge City Council has at this meeting on the date stated below, conducted a public hearing on the tentative budget and the proposed millage rate, and has recomputed said proposed millage rate, desires to hereby publicly announce said recomputed proposed millage rate and the percentage by which said recomputed proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida as follows. Section 1. The recomputed proposed millage rate for 2017, ad valorem taxation, in the city of Rockledge is hereby established at $6.20 per $1,000 of assessed valuation of properties subject to ad valorem taxation in the city of Rockledge. Section 2. The percentage by which said recomputed proposed millage rate of $6.20 per $1,000 exceeds the rollback rate of $5.9729 per $1,000 is 3.80%. Section 3. The percentage increase in the 2017 property taxes tentatively adopted by the Rockledge City Council is 3.80%. Passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida, this 6th day of September, 2017.
At this time, I open this up to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the resolution establishing a recomputed proposed millage rate of 6.20? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Now, we are adopting the 6.20. Now's the time if anybody wanted to change anything, so this is your last chance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call a question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, our next one is a resolution certifying the holding of a public hearing on the tentative general administrative budget of fiscal year 2018. That's certifying that we did hold a public hearing. I need a motion. I need a motion on if there was no changes, which is the first.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Offer a resolution certifying the holding of a public hearing on the tentative general administrative budget for fiscal year 2018. Read the resolution by title only.
No.
We have to do this one in its entirety.
We do? I'm sorry. Okay.
So am I.
I'll amend that to read this in its entirety.
And adopt the resolution.
And adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. City Attorney.
Resolution of the Rockledge City Council, certifying the holding of a public hearing on the tentative general administrative budget of said city for the fiscal year 2017-2018 pursuant to Section 200.065-2C Florida statutes, and adopting said city's tentative general administrative budget for said fiscal year without change or amendment. Whereas, Section 200.065-2C Florida statute requires that every Florida city to hold a public hearing on its tentative budget and proposed millage rate, and provides that at said hearing, the governing body of the city shall amend the tentative budget as it sees fit and adopt such amended tentative budget. And, whereas pursuant to Section 200.065-2C Florida statutes, the Rockledge City Council has at this meeting on the date stated below, conducted a public hearing on the tentative budget of the city of Rockledge for the fiscal year 2017 through 2018, and has determined that said tentative budget should be adopted in its present form without change or amendment as the city's quote tentative general administrative budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018, close quote. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida, that the tentative general administrative budget of the city of Rockledge for the fiscal year 2017 through 2018, copy of which is attached to and by this reference made a part of this resolution, is hereby adopted as the quote tentative general administrative budget of the city of Rockledge for the fiscal year 2017 through 2018, close quote. Passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida, this 6th day of September, 2017.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, move the adoption of the resolution. As read.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to D, first reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may have a moment to just remind people that you know what I'm gonna say.
I know, go ahead.
For those of you who are new to this process, or those in the audience tonight, we're blowing through a lot of these budget resolutions very quickly. Please understand that we're not taking them lightly. The Budget and Finance Committee began meeting in June of this year. The city staff started preparing this budget in May. And then we had a council workshop in August where the entire council came in and went over the entire budget. So although we're moving through it quickly tonight, do not be misled. This process and these numbers and this budget have gone through a lot of discussion and modification and preparation as we prepared for this meeting tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we're on D, ordinance.
Yeah, Dr. Smith.
What's that?
Dr. Smith.
Oh, no, so, Mr. Chairman, no, I concur 100% with what Councilman Forrester said. If a motion to bring this to a vote, to accept it, I'm for that.
Okay. Okay, we're looking for a motion on number D, ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer an ordinance for fiscal year 2018 on the general administrative budget for first reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, determining the anticipated revenues and expenses in the general administrative operations of said city for fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, appropriating funds for payment of the anticipated expenses of the city of Rockledge for said fiscal year and adopting the general administrative budget of said city for said fiscal year, authorizing the Rockledge City Manager to make certain transfers or appropriations in said budget, declaring that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize publication and a public hearing to be held on September the 20th, 2017.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm looking for ordinance, E is in Edward. First reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll move for the first reading of the fiscal year 2018 sewer system budget by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, determining the anticipated revenue and expenses for the operation of the Rockledge Sewer System during the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, appropriating funds for the payment of the anticipated expenses of the Rockledge Sewer System for said fiscal year, and adopting the budget for the operation of the Rockledge Sewer System for said fiscal year, authorizing the Rockledge City Manager to make certain transfers of appropriations in said budget, providing that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move to authorize publication and a public hearing to be held on September the 20th, 2017.
We have a motion, we have a second, Dr. Smith. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, F, ordinance, first reading. Who's gonna give it to me?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Offer an ordinance for the first reading fiscal year 2018 Stormwater Management Fund Budget by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, determining the anticipated revenue and expenses for the operation of the Rockledge Stormwater Management Fund during the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, appropriating funds for the payment of the anticipated expenses of the operation, administration, and maintenance of the stormwater drainage facilities of the city of Rockledge, and to carry out all other purposes of the utility for said fiscal year, and adopting the budget for the operation of the Rockledge Stormwater Drainage Facilities for said fiscal year, authorizing the Rockledge City Manager to make certain transfers of appropriations in said budget, providing that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize publication and a public hearing to be held on September the 20th, 2017.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance, G is in George, first reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neil.
I offer an ordinance for fiscal year 2018 Sanitation Services Budget for first reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, determining the anticipated revenue and expenses for the operation of the Rockledge Sanitation Services during the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30... excuse me, September 30, 2018, appropriating funds for the payment of the anticipated expenses of the Rockledge Sanitation Services for said fiscal year, authorizing the Rockledge City Manager to make certain transfers of appropriations in said budget, providing that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daskey.
Move to authorize publication and a public hearing to be held on September 20, 2017.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. H, you know if Chairman Blake was there, he'd be on top of everybody, because you're not moving fast enough here.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll move for first reading of the fiscal year 2018 Community Redevelopment Agency Management Fund by title only.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, determining the anticipated revenue and expenses for the operation of the Rockledge Community Redevelopment Agency Management Fund during the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, appropriating the funds for the payment of the anticipated expenses of operation, administration, and maintenance of the Rockledge Community Redevelopment Agency, and to carry out all other purposes of the Community Redevelopment Agency for said fiscal year, and adopting the budget for the operation of the Rockledge Community Redevelopment Agency for said fiscal year, authorizing the Rockledge City Manager to make certain transfers of appropriations in said budget, providing that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Neil.
I move to authorize publication and a public hearing to be held on September the 20th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Aye, ordinance, first reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Forrester.
Move first reading of fiscal year 2018 Rental Facilities Budget by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, determining the anticipated revenue and expenses for the operation of the Rockledge Rental Facilities during the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, appropriating funds for the payment of the anticipated expenses of the Rockledge Rental Facilities for said fiscal year, authorizing the Rockledge City Manager to make certain transfers of appropriations in said budget, providing that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daskey.
Move to authorize the publication and a public hearing to be held on September 20, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have J, ordinance, second reading and a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer ordinance 1711-2017, amending the general employee's retirement plan to provide for an executive option to opt out of the plan for second reading by title only in public hearing.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1711-2017, ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Florida, amending Section 1.1A15 and 1.2 of the Rockledge Code of the Rockledge General Employees Retirement Plan, providing for a city manager initially employed as city manager the option to opt out of the retirement plan, providing for the codification, providing for severability, and providing for the effective date.
I declare this open to the public. This matter open to the public, reference to the general employee's retirement plan to provide for an executive option to opt out of the plan. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this particular ordinance? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this particular ordinance? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. It's a pleasure to council.
Mr. Chairman.
Daskey.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. K, resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer a resolution providing for an executive opt out of the City of Rockledge General Employees Retirement Plan and to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. You got by on one there, Joe.
You got two bottles of water tonight, I made sure of it.
Well, I got another two.
L, ordinance, second reading and public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
L, ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I offer ordinance 1712-2017, amending the fiscal year budget 2017 general administrative budget for second reading by title only and public hearing.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1712-2017, in ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, amending ordinance number 1693-2016 of said city to revise and amend in certain respects the general administrative budget of the City of Rockledge for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, in the light of changed circumstances since the time of the adoption of said budget, declaring that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I declare this matter open to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak on amending the fiscal year 2017 general administrative budget? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. It's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman, move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, M, ordinance, second reading and public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer ordinance 1713-2017, amending the City of Rockledge Land Development Regulations, section 39.06, to establishing new building permit fees for second reading by title only and for a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1713-2017, in ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Rockledge Land Development Regulations by deleting section 39.06 building permit fees and replacing it with a new section 39.06 of the Land Development Regulations to establish new building permit fees, declaring that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
I declare this matter open to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on the establishment of the new building permit fees? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on the new building permit fees? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. N, ordinance, second reading and public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer ordinance 1714-2017, rezoning Huntington Estates fees for second reading by title only in public hearing.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have two seconds finally. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1714-2017, in ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, changing the zoning classification from the M1 General Industrial District to the R2A multifamily dwelling district located in Planning District 4 of approximately 5.7 acres north of Serengeti Way in the City of Rockledge as more particularly described in the body of this ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Rockledge to reflect the change of zoning affected by this ordinance, directing the city manager to forthwith cause the appropriate designation to be made on the face of the official city zoning map indicating the new zoning classification of the property described in this ordinance, declaring that invalidity in any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I open this up to the public. Anybody who'd like to speak on the rezoning of Huntington Estates? This is the rezoning of Huntington Estates. Is anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, close the public hearing. It's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman, move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Wow, we got through that, guys. For those of you in the audience who only do this once a year, we have all this house cleaning we have to do in September, right before the October 1st new budget, and you guys just experienced and sat through it all. Let's move on. Reports from boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Code Enforcement Board, minutes of meeting on August 10, 2017. The Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Board, minutes of meeting on August 10, 2017. Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners, minutes of meeting on August 23, 2017. Business Development Committee, minutes of meeting on August 29, 2017, and to consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, what's our first recommendation? Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners, approval of interlocal agreement between the city and the Community Redevelopment Agency and Brevard County.
Mr. Chairman.
Everybody had an opportunity to read that in their, in their package? City manager and our city attorney worked on that? Got it in good shape? Go ahead, Pat.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Rockledge, the Rockledge Community Redevelopment Agency, and Brevard County and to forward the interlocal agreement to Brevard County Board of County Commissioners for consideration at a future commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business, none. Consent business, consent business, is anybody want to pull anything off consent before we move forward with it?
Mr. Mayor.
What you got?
Just a point of information, I did some research.
Which unit you talking about?
The population estimate for, from University of Florida.
Which one is that?
That item of B.
B?
Bravo.
Okay, hold on a minute.
Yes, sir.
We gotta do this properly. We're pulling B from the...
No, I'm just making a point of information.
B or D?
B.
B. Just hang in there with me. Hold on just a second. B is in Baker, okay. I'm looking for a consent business approval for the other items minus B.
Mr. Chairman, move for the approval of these consent business items. Barton Boulevard Road closures for Community Redevelopment Agency for Hot Rockin' Nights Car Show on October 21, 2017, and the Rockledge Art and Craft Show, January 27 and 28, 2018. Long-term lease agreement for the old St. Mary's Church, Maranta Ministries, Inc., October 2017 through March 2018, for the city manager. One-day special event for St. Mary's Catholic Community Fall Festival, October 7, 2017, for the Planning Division. Purchase of four new police vehicles for the Police Department. Coastal Florida Police Benevolent Association contract amendments for the city manager. Teamsters Union new contract for the city manager. Declaration of three police vehicles as surplus property and subsequent sale of said property for the Police Department. Engagement letter with Carr Riggs and Ingram LLC, City of Auditing Firm, for the Finance Division. And finally, the agreement to continue the purchase of polymer from Dyno Tech LLC for the wastewater treatment department.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This is consent business, there is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Mr. Arts, I'll talk about B.
Item B, I did some research with the U.S. Census Bureau, their estimate is approximately 500 persons more than what the University of Florida, and I don't know what the input impact on our financial dealings with the federal government or state government might be. That's a significant number of people.
That is, and that's because we do tax sharing based on population, right?
Right.
I don't know. City manager?
We can...
Do we have a dog in this fight, or no?
Well, we can certainly look into it and see what implications it would have for us, because it would have some financial implication, but I do believe that Bieber is the one that is utilized historically, but we can certainly contest finding some different results, so perhaps I can get with you afterwards to see the source that you utilized versus what Bieber provided to us.
I was curious to find out what the difference was and what the impact was.
Sure.
Okay. But anyway, so now I'd like to have an approval on this from the, from this particular source. I'm looking for an approval for B, preliminary population estimate based on University of Florida. We're still going to look into the other one.
Yes, sir. I move to accept the preliminary population estimate from the University of Florida.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're now...
New business.
New business, 11. Action item, proposed city council meeting schedule for calendar year 2018, city manager. That's on page 221, folks.
Mayor and council, each year by statute, we need to, you all need to approve your calendar year meeting schedule for 2018, and so that is before you for your consideration.
After this year, I'd like for the council to consider adding a second meeting in June, for June the 20th, since we had so much on our agenda this past year, and I think the year before we did as well. Trying to do one meeting for those three months doesn't seem to work with all the budget items we have, and I don't think it's unfair for the other residents of trying to get some business taken care of to the council. My opinion, I think we should add a second meeting in June, which would be the June the 20th. I'm looking for feedback from anybody else.
Should, if we're going to do that, should we do it in June or do it in July, which is right in the middle of that three-month span?
I think June is better. I really do. July is, the 4th is on our first Wednesday this year, so we're going to be off anyway that day. We're going to have our picnic that day anyway, so we wouldn't be working that day anyway. So I think June worked better this year. We were overwhelmed on our first meeting in, in July this year. Yes, Dr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the action item with the addendum as so presented by the city manager on the meeting in reference to the date change.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I'm good.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Let me go back to my agenda. You don't hang in there with me. Action item, award of bid transportation and disposal of dewatered sludge. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as you all can see, there was a bid process conducted for the contract on the transportation and disposal of the dewatered sludge. Two bids were received, and the staff is recommending the low bid company, who is H&amp;H Liquid Sludge Disposal, Inc. Back to you, Mayor.
Any questions, city manager?
I do.
Frank?
Didn't we have some discussion about trying to find...
Yes.
Someplace to put this stuff locally so that we don't have to pay somebody to haul it out? Is there such a...
I think it's unfair to put that on Jimmy the first year, but he knows that we're looking for that, so we're going to be pressing him real hard next year to come up with something for us.
I have been doing some research on that. We've been looking at different ways to reclassify the sludge and using and disposing it ourselves locally.
Okay. So next year, you're going to have a plan for us.
Next year, we have...
Thank you, Jimmy.
All right. I'm good.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second?
No.
We don't?
No. No one made the motion yet.
I'm sorry. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to award the bid for the transportation and disposal of dewatered sludge to H&amp;H Liquid Sludge Disposal Incorporated and to authorize staff to execute the three-year agreement effective October 1, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action item, approval of spectrum internet solution, Finance Division, city manager.
Mayor and council, as part of our ongoing efforts to harden the city's software, hardware solution, the items that were discussed thoroughly over the summer in purchasing the new enterprise software, this is one of the steps to bring the fiber optic internet solution that would guarantee an uptime of 99.9%, I think, and we have that in writing, so we believe this is a very good solution to make sure that the city's overall master server is well protected and always in operation. Back to you, Mayor.
Anybody have any questions of the city manager? Okay, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the spectrum internet solution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Protions, remonstrances, and communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this city council on anything that has to do with the city of Rockledge? It's your opportunity to come forward. Is there anybody in it? Yes, ma'am? Did you fill out a card in the back? But come on up anyway. And you'll have to fill the card out and give it to our clerk, okay? When you're done. No problem. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Cammer, K-A-M-M-E-R-E-R, address 970 Bogan Villa.
Okay.
What's the situation going down at the dead end of our street? There's the two lakes that were put in. I mean, we've had a quiet dead end street. Is there going to be a road going through?
I know there's not going to be a road, but Ken or city manager, I don't know if city manager knows much about that down there, as new as she is here.
Ken.
Come on up, come on up, Ken. It's got to be recorded.
Bill Morse of Bogan Villa? Okay, good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
In Poole, live at city of Rockledge, city hall most of the time. Actually, we haven't come up with an interior plan for amenities like we have for the Barton Park, Lake Betsy. Don Griffin Trail, it's pretty much up in the air. The right-of-way from Fisk on Bogan Villa goes up to the property that we own for the lake system that we have just established. We're mowing it at this point. We really don't have any set plans. It could be an access point, but it may not be.
Could we put a NIX on the access point? I mean, as it is, we were having even traffic going through there with the dead end. And we had to call the police department several times because cars were just going through and...
You need to get over in front of the microphone, I apologize.
Cars were just going through there even without public access. And we called the police several times because cars were going in there doing, well, we know what they were probably doing, but...
Is it open, Ken?
I'm sorry?
Is it open, Ken?
No.
Is this the one Ken, you and the chief and I met about?
But they came in and put a fence up just recently, a small, just a gate. But before, there was just the
We just fenced it off.
Barrier poles and stuff.
Yeah.
But people would get out of their cars and literally move them, drive on through, do whatever.
Well, where are they going? I mean, you can't access anything back there, Ken, you can?
No, but they were going back there to party or whatever it was, having sex, I don't know.
Okay.
They were just going through, but, you know, I mean, we don't know, are they building houses back there also to where?
Yeah, but those houses won't have any access back to Bogan Villa.
Okay, because, I mean, and my name is Carolyn, I live on
Carolyn, come up, your name and address for the...
On Bogan Villa Drive also, 971 Bogan Villa.
Okay.
Your last name, please?
It's Cooper, Cooper Miller.
Okay.
And basically what she's saying is something needs to be done.
Okay.
I mean, what is going to be done?
All right. At this point, we're installing a 20-foot gate, two 10-feet gates that actually go in front of the Bogan Villa right-of-way where the pavement ends, and we're bringing corner posts out to the right-of-way and tying into the property corners of both houses, the east property corners, which would be your southeast property corner and across the street, the northeast property corner. So, I can't go on private property, but I can tell you that we are blocking off the right-of-way entrance. There will be no way they can get in with a vehicle. I can't stop.
Without crashing the gates down?
Right.
And if that happens, you need to call the police right away. Yeah.
Call the police.
They had the fencing up, they have crashed through that also. We're just, you know, we live on a very quieted end, you know? And we kind of like to keep it quiet. And we're just afraid if we get right-of-way traffic coming through there from everyone, that it's not going to be
We're not going to do that.
You know, a nice neighborhood.
Well, maybe when they see these gates up, that's going to stop.
I seriously doubt it.
With those 20-foot gates?
I seriously doubt it.
Well...
I'm sorry, but...
All you have to do is call the police if you see somebody trespassing on our property or crashing those gates.
Have been.
Have they been coming down?
They've been, yeah, the police have been showing up. I mean, they went as far as they're driving through our yards just to turn around.
Really, to get around the gate?
Just to go back there, yeah.
Ken, you want to say something?
The gate, we just put that up this week. Ken and chief and I met earlier last week, and that's what I asked them to do, directed them to put a gate and a fence up to block any access with a vehicle entirely. So, that literally went up this week.
Okay.
So, I'd sort of like to give it an opportunity to see if it might work, but anyway.
You need to name an address for the record if you're going to speak, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Angela Williams-Farrow, F-A-R-R-O-W, address 967 Bogan Villa Drive,
Okay.
Rockledge 32955.
Okay.
I am the actual homeowner on the corner lot.
That's a really nice landscape yard.
Yes, it is.
I know that house very well, that's very pretty.
I am the homeowner, thank you.
I've been down there and checked that out.
Yes, I'm the homeowner, and we love the lakes. It's going to increase the property of my home and everybody else's on the street. However, with, since the fence has been up, I've already come home and caught several people walking around the fence to go fishing. I understand there's bass and all kind of fish out there, and that's great. I have, as you know, I have a garage, I have a driveway, and my husband parks right there by the light post. So, already his, which I understand, I don't own the street, but I own the property. And I think what my other two neighbors are trying to say, even though there's the gate for no vehicles, we don't want cars blocking our driveway in front of our property for people coming back there to fish.
I agree.
So, maybe, I don't know, a no trespassing sign, but something, because I already see this being a problem. Like I said, the fence is already up, but there's places, which is great, because all three of us have dogs, and we walk the dogs back there. But, you know, we stay down there compared to people bringing cars, trucks, the person that tried to bring a boat and to go, no, she, I heard...
They almost hit her husband's car trying to get the boat.
Yeah.
Getting cornered.
And her, her husband actually stopped the person from bringing this boat back there to go fish before the, the access gate went up. So, and like I said, yes, we can call the police, and before the gate was up, there would be vehicles all time of the night, 10, 11 o'clock, either selling drugs, turning tricks, may have been dumping bodies out there in the lakes. We don't know, but there was all kind of traffic. So, we're thankful for the gate, but we're concerned about still public access of people parking and walking back to go fish with, like, like they said, we're just trying to keep it quiet.
Okay, let's, let's give it some time since the gate just went up, and you guys monitor it, and feel free to call the police any time of the day or night if there's an issue out there. And then we'll get a report back from the city manager over the next 60 days probably, and find out what kind of reports or problems we've been having out there. And then we'll have to take other action if it becomes still a problem.
Okay.
But they get it closed up because the gate's up, but then there's two sections that...
Where you could just walk around the gate, so...
And drive through, is that going to be covered to where it's a...
I can only go to what our right-of-way is, which is about 60...
The rest of it's private property.
It's private property, so I've, I've put those corner posts, the ones that are further north and south, those are on your, you know, right next to your property corner. I, I can't go past that.
Okay. Okay, so, so I guess my question or concern is, like I said, there's, there's my property, and there's, there's, there's the actual road. So, just to make sure I understand as far as in zoning, so if, if 10 people wanted to come back there and fish and park in the road, are they allowed to do that, possibly blocking my driveway? That's, that's my main concern.
They're not allowed to block your driveway, that's for sure.
Okay.
They're not allowed to block your driveway, even though it's a city road, it's a public right-of-way, they can't block your access.
But they, they can line up in the front of my house along the street if they want to walk back there and go fishing?
Probably could, it's a city, it's a public street, yeah.
Their in-laws are the problem that we're concerned about, that's, that's the problem.
Well, let's monitor this now that the gate's gone up, and I'm, I'm sure there's going, hopefully there's neighbors that are going back there and fishing that can walk there, no?
No, no.
These people coming from outside?
No, these, these are people coming, parking their vehicles, well, more so on my side, the house with, with the fence around it, they're, they're parking along my side.
We have other access to that lake out there.
Well, we've told them to go Rosalie Jones, we've said, mentioned that, and a few have went that way.
Okay.
And of course, they're doing the development of Huntington.
This, this might just be a time of education. We got to educate these people on where to go to get access to it out there. But...
Not trying to be cynical or anything like that, but you all don't live on Bogan Villa Drive, so...
No, we don't.
You need to, you know, just come and see what we're talking about, I mean...
We're here, we're here to, we're here to address you.
But I'm right at the curve that you go around Estridge. So, my yard has been ran through with cars and everything else. They make that turn. I have those, what, posts in the yard, so somebody's fender came off one day, so I didn't care, but that needs to be addressed also, and that, I guess that's a police issue there, so.
Right.
But, you know, we have the speeders and everything, so.
Stay in contact with our city manager. She'll take your calls here at city hall, and the police department will certainly respond to anything you guys calling for down there as far as cars blocking driveways or trying to tear our gate down or going around our gate.
Driving in our yard.
Yes, driving in your yard, definitely.
Thank you.
Law is not cheap.
Also, Mr. Police Officer, do you, do you have a non-emergency number? Because we're, we're going to call when it gets crazy down there, which that's, that's what I foresee.
He'll help you out with a number you can dial direct over there.
Okay, but thank you for allowing me to speak, I do appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, this has to be a point of record, that's why we need the cards.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Ken.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let me say this, Ms. Carolyn, who works in Dr. Bowles's office, I can't ever go in Village Green. They're very much concerned about the neighborhood and et cetera, so I appreciate the effort, them to come and for us.
I haven't had a chance yet.
You have to say that?
She got me last week too. She got me last week too. And, and I, I drove around, I did, I did look. I, I drove actually down to Huntington to see what it looked like from that end. And so, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I can vouch for occasional speeders down my street, which is right off of Estridge, which ties into Bogan Villa, that same neighborhood.
Miracle Way.
Miracle Way, sir.
Yes, I'm very familiar with Estridge Drive. Estridge Drive is a speed lane, it's always has been.
Now, can we get speed bumps?
There's a process to go through, you need to contact the city manager for speed bumps. There's a whole process you have to go through to get speed bumps approved, okay?
Petitions and such, but yeah.
Yeah. Contact city manager, she'll help you with that, okay?
Mr. Mayor, let, let me just add them here.
Go ahead.
I just saw the captain just walked forward and gave his cards to these, the neighborhood ladies. I think that is wonderful. Thank you, captain. Let's go.
Okay, is anybody else in the audience like to speak to the city council about anything to do with the city of Rockledge? Oh, again with you, come on. Name and address for the record.
I am so sorry, Angela Williams-Farrow, 967 Bogan Villa Drive. Actually, I just had a quick question with Hurricane Irma coming. As far as in flood, are there pumps or anything in that lake? Does anybody know, or?
That's a good question.
There's no pumps in that lake.
Or any...
There's no pumps in that lake, but that lake will take a lot of water, I can tell you that.
It can take a lot?
It'll take a lot of water.
Okay.
That's why we built those three lakes back there that all connect to each other, was for the drainage problems in Rockledge that goes back 25 years.
Okay.
That's a 25-year plan that's just now coming to an end.
Oh, really?
It, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's, it's beautiful, it's beautiful back there, but I thought about that with the storm coming, that's one of the other questions I've been asking.
That's going to change the whole dynamics of your, of your subdivision when we get all that fixed in there.
Okay, thank you. I promise I won't be back, thank you.
Nobody else in the audience? Okay, report, city manager report.
Mayor and council, thank you very much. Of course, the main thing has just been mentioned, I think the main thing on everyone's mind is the storm. And so, as we all have seen on the news and so forth, it is coming. And so, the latest report at about 5:00 to 5:15 this evening, still is approaching South Florida, still of Cat 5. It appears that it's going to come towards the Keys, moving a little more slowly, if you will, but then it, the latest report says, once it gets there, it's to take a jog north, initially projecting to go over Miami, but as we all know, that's subject to change. And then it is expected to pick up speed and go fairly quickly to the north northeast. That's the latest. But with that said, I would respectfully ask council to consider authorizing the city manager with watching the storm very carefully, and if necessary, to close city offices either Friday or Monday, or perhaps both, depending on the path and speed of the storm. And then, secondly, if council would consider that, for those employees, hourly employees, who cannot come to work due to the storm and the city being closed, to authorize the city to pay them for an eight-hour day. So, back to you, mayor and council.
Okay. So, we've heard the request from the city manager, she's looking for...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we grant the city manager authority to shut down the city hall for the city for non-essential personnel on the Friday or Monday, or even Tuesday if necessary, and to go ahead for one day, pay any employees who are unable to make, make it to work because of transportation issues caused by the storm.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Only thing I have, the only thing I have, Brenda, is, is phone calls in the city hall. Are we going to be able to address the phone calls coming in Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
Yes, mayor and council, I was going to give you a few more details to, once, if, if you all chose to approve that request, but we will be monitoring calls, Mr. Try, pardon me, Chris has set up a way that the city hall phones can be, with our new voice-over IP system, can be forwarded down to the EOC so that we can answer calls directly from the EOC. So, and I've already had a couple of volunteers to say they, they'd be willing to stay and answer calls even at city hall. So, we will make sure that during working hours, that citizens have an opportunity to, to get someone live, to try and give them a sense of comfort, not that we can do a thing about the storm, but so they're available. Secondly, the sanitation will run Friday, because a lot of yard debris is out there. People, as we know, are cutting and trimming and putting it out, thinking we're going to come and pick up. So, we just, we have to pick it up on Friday. We can't knowingly leave that out on the streets with that storm coming, anyway.
Deputy mayor.
Yes, sir. We're authorizing, if I understand it correctly, if we close city hall and the non-essential services, are we going to do anything to compensate those who do have to come to work over and above my past life? I, when it got really bad weather, I worked more, not less, and those office personnel got the day off with pay, but they did something to compensate those that didn't get the day off with pay.
Okay.
And I would think that that would only be fair, that they were taking care of as well.
Okay, was it, the, the motion, actually, if I were, if, if I understood it, it was give the discretion to the city manager to decide how she's going to handle it. Right, Frank?
Yes.
Okay.
My question was, I, I think it said a eight-hour day in the motion, and if it does carry over into Tuesday, or is that for just a day, or would it be two days if, if it's up to her discretion?
I'll modify the motion and also add to it to, as many days as the city manager feels necessary, and to allow the city manager to arrange additional compensation for those people who've worked during the storm.
Okay, we have an amended motion, Mr. City Attorney.
The motion was seconded, the second needs to be removed, and then you remove your original motion and make your amended motion.
Okay, okay. Who seconded, who made the second?
I didn't make them up.
Smith?
I know.
You need to remove your second? Yep. Just say, I'll remove my second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Frank, remove your motion?
I'll remove my motion.
Okay. Now, your new motion.
My new motion would be to allow the city manager discretion on non-essential personnel for the duration of the storm emergency, to give her discretion to arrange additional compensation for those employees who are required to work and...
Closures?
And, and to allow her to close city hall and, and other, for other non-essential personnel during the duration of the storm emergency.
Dr. Smith? You second that?
Yes.
You second? Okay. Do we have any discussion? Everybody understand what we're doing? Does the city manager understand our direction?
I do, Mr. Mayor and council.
Go ahead, somebody do it.
I got it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Guys, I have to go on a conference call with the governor at 7:15, so I'm going to try to get through this thing real quick, and if I can't, I will turn it over to Pat. And the city manager has a conference call with Beavard County, EOC at 8:00 PM, I believe it is, isn't it? Okay, reports from the dais. City clerk?
I find me.
City attorney?
I don't know, I believe I have a litigation report, I didn't...
It said none.
Yes, okay. Just basically, if you had any business at the courthouse, it'll be closed Friday and Monday. And indeed, you have to record everything, there is...
Okay.
And I have nothing else.
Okay, Mr. Hartzell.
The wards luncheon, that it was September 12th, is now September 19th, Tuesday at the Radisson. I pleased to invite you, but not on my, not on my tariff.
Okay, Mr. Dusky.
In case you didn't see the notification yet from city hall, the committee, we met this morning for the 9/11 remembrance ceremony, we have decided to cancel that, just due to the storm. It will not be rescheduled, we kind of felt that it was not appropriate to drag that out to another time, so we will not have it this year, we will reconvene next year.
Okay. Dr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to prayerfully, prayerfully wish all of the hurricane individuals who are confronted with what we are facing, our sister Rockledge, and city manager, and our staff, and the council, and our families, a safe hurricane season. Aye.